May I have your attention, please? Ladies and gentlemen, could the tellers, the people that have agreed to be tellers, could you come forward now to be sworn in, please? All the tellers, come forward now, please.
Jakes? The middle school band playing together here, so... Uh, let's see, only one more. Yeah, yeah, my youngest. So she does blues. So she does big band in the old seven band. You know, it just amazes me how much the kids progress. Thank you for this program. He doesn't have any...
I can't even hear something down there.
Charge again.
Good evening, everybody. Not working? There we go. My name is Paul Semino. I'm your elected town moderator. Want to welcome you back to the second night of Southborough's 2018 Annual Town Meeting. I have been informed by our town clerk that a quorum of 100 registered voters is present, and therefore, this second night of town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I am responsible for the oversight and conduct of this town meeting. I am pleased to see all of you here, especially those that are attending for the first time. And if you're attending tonight for the first time, then you weren't here last night, double credit. I will do my best to honor your commitment to town governance by proceeding along as fairly and efficiently as possible. A reminder that the bounds of the hall, or all of the seating areas, inside the auditorium, or the aisles up to the back pillars. So if any voter wants their vote counted, they're going to need to be forward of the back pillars, and either in the aisle, or in one of the seats. When I call for votes, of course, you have your now, tonight's yellow voter card. You'll raise the card, either for or against, as we move through tonight's remaining items. I'm going to, for those of you who were here last night, we have several articles to go through tonight that are proposed to be funded by the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. Beyond that, we just have three other articles remaining to cover. What I want to suggest, and I don't mind saying, I've asked for permission, for quote fingers, permission, from Ms. Gillespie, the head of, the chairman, the chairwoman of the CPA, the CPC. I want to suggest that we advance the non-CPA articles, take them up, dispose of them, and then finish our, hopefully, an hour, hour and a half total, with the remaining articles, which would all be CPA-related. Now, to advance, and by the way, the articles I'm suggesting that we advance are numbers 31, 32, and 35. In order to advance those articles to the front of today's lineup, I need the consent of the hall. It requires a majority vote. If I could ask for all those in favor? All opposed? All right. I appreciate your indulgence on that. I think it's going to make the evening go even smoother. And with apologies, apologies to Mr. Shea, because he didn't know I was about to do this, Mr. Shea, Article 31, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept as a public way the relocated and altered layout of Washington Street in Southborough, and two, to accept as a public way a portion of Coslin Drive in Southborough, both of which are more particularly shown on a plan entitled "Washington Street Discontinuation and Relocation Plan of Land in Southborough, Mass., Prepared for Dell EMC, dated February 2, 2018, and prepared by Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc., and a plan entitled 'Coslin Drive Acceptance Plan of Land in Southborough, Mass., Prepared for Dell EMC, dated December 29, 2017, and prepared by Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc., copies of which are on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire for public way purposes, by per, purposes, by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in the parcels of land included within said altered layout of Washington Street, and such portion of Coslin Drive, all as included within, all as shown on said plans, but excluding any access, drainage, utility, or other easements, serving abutting properties, and further to transfer the care, custody, and control of the parcels of land outside the altered layout and hereby discontinued from the Board of Selectmen for public way purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of conveyance, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to discontinue, release, or convey all of the town's right, title, and interest in the discontinued portions of Washington Street, shown on such plan, on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate.
All right, before I call for a second on that, a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, with motions like this, obviously, we have every motion for you up on the big screen here. It is within our purview to dispense with the reading of the motion, verbatim, the way Mr. Shea just did, and in cases like this, I'm not sure the reading of a motion like this is any more helpful than reading it yourself, or having the explanation given to you. So with your permission, when we go further, I may, I ask you to dispense with the reading of the motion. A couple of other housekeeping items related to the meeting ourselves, the meeting itself. We have eight tellers who have been appointed to count standing votes if it becomes necessary to do so, and they are Craig Nicholson, Scott Rillander, Sarah Haggerty, Karen Finelli, Larry Jazinski, Chris Jazinski, Alan Belniak, and Sharon Schumaker, and I thank them for their service. Our past practice also has been to allow non-registered voters in the hall at the start of the meeting. These people are typically non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, and the like. All of them must wear name tags issued by the clerk, and are not allowed to speak unless approved by the hall. They are carrying red tags, as opposed to your yellow tags, so they are identifiable that way. They are Brian Ballantyne, Town Treasurer, Paul Sibelli, Town Assessor, Trevor Dillman, Southborough Access Media, Ryan Donovan, Library Director, Karen Galligan, DPW Director, Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, Kathy Halloran, former resident of Southborough, Michelle Jenkins, Assistant Town Clerk, Christine Johnson, Superintendent of Schools, Heidi Krieger, Town Accountant, Tom Laflamme, IT Director, Joe Morrow, our Fire Chief, Heather Morris, Trotter's Staff for Lights and Sound, Terry Newman, from Southborough Access Media, Ken Paulus, our Police Chief, Christine Penzoni, Trotter's Staff for Lights and Sound, Mark Purple, the Town Administrator, Mark Rubidow, the Building Commissioner, Beth Rosenbloom, our Conservation Agent, Sarah Castle, from our Youth and Family Services Office, and Jonathan Phelps, from the Metro West News. If there are no objections, we would welcome these people here tonight. Do I have the consent of the hall? Please raise your hands. All right, that having been done, I will call for a second on Mr. Shea's motion. He receives a second. Mr. Shea?
So this action is required to make the new location of Washington Street and a portion of Coslin Drive public ways, and to discontinue the former locations of Washington Street. The new location of Washington Street and the portion of Coslin Drive to be accepted have been constructed and completed by EMC in accordance with the subdivision plans approved by the Planning Board in 2008.
So we're accepting a, an interest in real estate, so technically, this, not technically, it requires a two-thirds vote. Any comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. All in favor, please raise your hands, or your cards. All opposed? That motion carries. Article 32, Ms. Braccio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Southborough Code, Chapter 174, entitled "Zoning," by striking therefrom in Section 174, 10G, in its entirety, which specifies, I quote, "Any person aggrieved by the action of the Planning Board on a site plan approval application may appeal said action to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as provided in Article 6 thereof."
Mr. Moderator?
Well, first, hold on a second, Mr. Dennington. Does that receive a second?
Second.
All right, it receives a second. The motion is to indefinitely postpone, but, Mr. Dennington, you wish to be heard, go ahead.
Oh, well, so a point of order, I have a point of order, and then I have an amendment. Does this work? Andrew Dennington, 10 Carolyn Terrace, first, okay, now you've got the...
The motion on the floor is what Ms. Braccio read. You are free to amend it, as part of that discussion. Please go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 32 in the town meeting warrant by striking it and substituting the following, colon, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Southborough Code, Chapter 174, entitled 'Zoning,' by striking Section 174-10, paren, capital G, and paren, and replacing it with the following, colon, 'Any person aggrieved by the action of the Planning Board on a site plan approval application may appeal said action to a court of competent jurisdiction in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 17.'"
All right, you made, I understand you've already made that amendment in writing? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, you want to speak to it? Go ahead, please.
Sure, so the, the, I think this needs a second.
Thank you, go ahead.
So the intent of Article 32 in the town warrant is to change a certain feature of the existing town bylaw, which provides that a person who is aggrieved by a Planning Board action on an application for site plan approval, that the appeal comes to the ZBA. And when there was a public hearing, or a public discussion of this at the Board of Selectmen, a very good question was asked, well, what, the existing article in the town warrant simply deletes the provision in the town bylaw concerning appellate rights. So if you were to, the existing article just leaves the bylaw silent. The amendment that I've proposed, I think, is a clarifying amendment, which makes clear that in place of an appeal to the ZBA, and a person who is aggrieved by a Planning Board action on site plan review, still has an immediate right to appeal in court. So it's really in the nature of a clarifying amendment. It's, it's better designed to accomplish what Article 32 that's printed in the warrant is trying to do, and in all of the discussions before the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and any other board I can think of that's spoke on this, this amendment has been previewed that this amendment would be offered at town meeting. Thank you.
Before we move on, Mr. Morris, is, are you or someone from the Planning Board going to talk about your report first? Because I'd like to get that on, on the floor, before we go to comments and questions. Thank you, for the folks at the mic, thank you for your indulgence. Ms. Luttrell, please.
Mimi Luttrell.
Actually, let me, let me explain. Before, before we go on, any zoning change, regardless of who originates it, requires that the Planning Board hold a public hearing and issue a report respective to that change, and that's what I'm asking for right now. So please, go ahead.
Mimi Luttrell, again, Planning Board. The Planning Board voted in favor of this article and this amendment. Five in favor, nothing, zero, not in favor, on advice of Town Council, and additionally, the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, which does training for all the state planning boards and zoning boards, boards of appeals, recommends against pitting one board against another within a town. These, there've only been a couple of these appeals. One recently was not very healthy for the town, and we thought this was a good solution to that issue.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
John Bartley, for White Circle. I think we should leave this the way it is. I think it's a good checks and balances with the Planning Board being appealed to the ZBA. What this really does is it, it hurts the little business, and it hurts the butter. And the fact of the matter is that the, this has been on the, on the books for decades, as Mimi Luttrell has said, with very little use, but it does not distinguish between a minor site plan and a major site plan. So a small business, and the threshold for, for a site plan is very low in this town. What it does is that it, it gives you anything that has to do with a change of use, change of parking, change of landscaping, historic buildings, all have to go before a site plan. So then, an aggrieved party would have to go to court over it, whether it's the proponent or it's the butter. I don't know what the town needs to rush to go to court on something for, and spend the tax money on this. It appears to me that it's a three-week minor thing to find out whether the Planning Board, or the ZBA, would uphold the Planning Board and go along with them, or if they would send it back to the Planning Board, or whatever. But regardless, it just doesn't seem like it's, I don't think it was well thought out in fact at all. If we don't use it that much, I just don't see why, why the, the big problem with it. It's, you know, if it's signs, I mean, there's so many things that go to site plan, and, you know, it just takes away the, the ability, I think, of a fair living, level field. I mean, we're worried about one board against another board on one project, but, you know, for 30, 40 years, we've been doing this the same way, and I, I think that it's served the town fine.
Thank you. Mr. Stivers?
Sam Stivers, 7th Presidential Drive. A process question first. Do we need to vote on the amendment before we talk about it, or we're okay commenting on the, on the proposed amendment, even though it hasn't been approved by the hall?
Well, we could, we could discuss the, the amendment is debatable.
Okay. Yeah, I, okay. My, my comments are related, are directed toward the amended version of this, so...
Then, then you're in the right place.
Okay, thank you. I'm a member of the Advisory Committee. I'm speaking as an individual committee member, and specifically, not on, on behalf of advisory. I'm not in favor of this article. I was in the minority of a five to four vote of advisory to support the article, and my concern is simple. I believe in a butter who's not satisfied with a Planning Board site plan decision, should have an option of a relatively low-cost, rapid, and local appeal, as has been available in town for the last 30-plus years. I don't believe that the only appeal option should be to pay thousands of dollars to hire a lawyer, go to court, and wait months to get another hearing. A couple of background points. First, I don't think anybody is suggesting that the Planning Board isn't the right place for these decisions, and isn't doing a capable job. I have great respect for the job the Planning Board does in these areas. But from my years on the zoning board, I've seen that even a good decision can produce a decision that leaves an butter unhappy with the result, and I don't think it's unreasonable for residents in this situation to have a local, second chance. Second, I'd point out it's notable that there's a divided opinion about the article. ZBA Chairman reported to Advisory that ZBA couldn't reach a majority consensus on the article, so they didn't take a position on it. Advisory took two votes on this article. The first was zero in favor, five opposed, and two abstentions to not support. Second was five in favor, four to oppose the article, so the final position was to support. So neither of these boards could get the two-thirds vote required for approval by town meeting for a zoning bylaw change. I've heard a lot of comments in various hearings about, from proponents of the article, heard the ZBA doesn't have the necessary site plan evaluation experience. In fact, per state regulation, ZBA is in place of the Planning Board for 40B comprehensive permit decisions, and so the ZBA has been doing this for many years. I've heard Town Council report that a judge commented that our bylaw is unusual in this regard. It may be unusual, but it's not illegal, and I don't mind being unusual for giving a butter as this local second chance at a permitting decision. I've also heard the comments that Ms. Luttrell mentioned about putting one board against another, maybe generating additional costs. I think there have been a couple of examples, the one she'd mentioned, I think many people feel was easily preventable, so I don't think that's too representative. So I don't believe that any of these concerns is sufficient to outweigh the advantages of a second local hearing option for the average citizen. I think it's important for citizens to believe they can be heard via practical, accessible process, as this local option provides, and this reinforces public confidence that their concerns can be reasonably addressed. So I'd much prefer to have a straightforward local option, as an butter, to a board familiar with local issues, as opposed to needing to spend money to hire a lawyer, wait for months, go to a judge who's unfamiliar with what's going on locally, to determine the result of my appeal. So for these reasons, I therefore ask for a no vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, Ms. Luttrell, I'll come back to you for your second, and I'm going to go here to Ms. Braccio.
Thank you. Lisa Braccio, 13 Oregon Road, Member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. I support this article for a couple of different reasons. I actually did some research. I thought it would be, as Town Council had sent, had said at a, at a meeting, that not many towns actually use this, so I actually took the time... So, I actually took the time and I went through a hundred and two towns to see, kind of get a consensus on what they do in their zoning code. I found only three out of a hundred and two. I stopped at that point. I thought it was a good consensus. Um, only three out of a hundred and two have this in their bylaw, that you have one board appealing to another board. Um, I think it's very problematic. I think we've seen that through, um, a recent decision that came, and I never think that pitting one board against another is, um, a good opportunity. Um, also, it's only been used twice since it's been on the books. So, um, one of the times was by a developer and one of the times was actually by citizens. So, uh, based on the amount of time it's been on the books, I don't think it has served its purpose to the town. I guess in some degree because a citizen has used it. But overall, twice, and I think it became in the eighties or the seventies, when this actually came into effect. And again, we're always at risk of pitting one board against another board. Site plan approval should be within the purview of the Planning Board, in my opinion. Um, that's what they do. That's what they're specialized in. ZBA has their own things that are very important to them that they rule on. Um, variances, special permits, and so on. So, I would ask that the Hall, uh, please support this article, to support our ZBA and to support our Planning Board, and let them do the jobs that we've asked them to do as volunteers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Luttrell, I apologize, because you've spoken already. I, I do need to go through the others before we come back to you for the second time. Mr. Butler?
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. I have a question about the amendment specifically. And my question is, if, if the amendment did not pass, would it make any substantive difference in any circumstance? Or is this just for the reading convenience of residents?
Mr. Dennington, you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, uh, I think the debate we're having is going right to the substance of it. Um, and that reflects that in, in my, I mean, just, the, the background of this is, I gave some thought to, okay, if the existing, the, the article which is in the town, uh, the warrant were to pass and we were to just strike a provision, um, that said that the appeal has to go to the ZBA, would that in fact, uh, mean that someone who was aggrieved wouldn't have to go to the ZBA? Um, they would have to, they would have the option of going straight to court? And I did some research on this and found that there was a, a bunch of conflicting case law on that, and that if we kept, if we were to pass Article 32 as it is in the town warrant, you may still have a situation, for example, where someone felt that they were aggrieved by a Planning Board action on site plan review, but then wouldn't have the right to appeal until they still went first before the ZBA, or that they, uh, couldn't appeal until there was a decision by the building inspector to issue a building permit or to not issue a building permit. So, I don't know if that answers your question?
So, uh, so you wouldn't have to wait for the building, for the building inspectors, as, as, potentially, to have actionable situation? So, if, if, if I can summarize what I heard, that is, you might be able to more quickly appeal if this amendment passed?
Yes.
Then you would be able to, if, if the amendment as proposed did not pass?
Ye- yes. And there's also, there is an appeals court decision that, uh, discussed a, um, zoning bylaw that has basically this exact same language in Westwood and recognized the validity of this bylaw, so that this draft bylaw does exactly what it says it's supposed to do. And there's also similar bylaws in Sudbury and Stoughton that have survived judicial review. So, that's the intent.
Okay. So, if I might point out one other thing, which is that the, the text which we have in front of us, if it purports to be the amendment, is not correct. That is, it first, in the first section here, it talks about striking, but we're now talking about leaving in the, the text which the words above say, "strike." So, I, it may be that what's in front of us is not, visually in front of us, is not what's in front of us to vote on, but that's a hazardous situation with regard to asking people to vote.
Can I, well, okay. Can I solve this? Okay. We need to change the wording. I move that the, okay, I amend the amendment. I guess I'm amending the amendment. That the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Southborough.
Excuse me. I had a comment on the pending motion.
Hold on. Mr. Perry, I haven't recognized you. All right? Mr. Perry, please.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Butler, you make a good point. What you should see up here is that the entirety of what is on the right side of the screen, starting with the quotation marks, should be in red line. Does that make more sense to you?
No, it doesn't.
If I might, the, we, we're, we're no longer, we're no longer striking words that begin with any person aggrieved. That, so, I don't know whether your goal is to have that which is in front of us be that which we're voting on, but as long as it says, "striking this, this," it's wrong.
No. All right.
Which specifies.
Yeah.
It, it should say something like, "striking this" and replacing it with "that."
Yes. Yes, it should. You're right. So, uh.
Okay. So, the, so, so the clerk is, is saying to me that the actual correct text is before us to vote on, it's just that visually, it's incorrect in front of us, and that's all I was pointing out at the beginning with.
The, so, the red line version on the right shows, I don't know why that, you're right, the amendment is on the left, but shown on the right, you can see visually the proposed change to the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
It puts it all together.
Right. But that, the confusion comes in that we're talking about striking in its entirety, and then we're coming back with something that's part red line, part not. Um, but I, but Mr. Dennington's explanation, I, I understand, and I hope you all do as well, that what's on the right side in quotation marks would be the bylaw if you were to support this amendment.
As long as the clerk has the correct text.
Yeah. Ms. Rosenblum?
Hi. Betsy Rose Moon, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. I just have a question for, um, anybody who knows the answer on the amendment. If a right of appeal exists under Mass. General Laws, why is it necessary to make this amendment?
I'm going to go to Town Council on that.
And if it doesn't, I would be wary of this board purporting to state that someone has a right that doesn't exist. So, I'd like to hear maybe from an attorney on that point. Did I make myself clear?
I'll be glad to answer that. The, um, the, the initial zoning amendment was one that I suggested with the knowledge that there is a general right of appeal, and there's two ways to do that, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, 17, and something that's known as certiorari. If there's no other ability to appeal, then there is a catch-all provision that allows that. However, Andrew Dennington, the Chairman of the ZBA, did a little more work after the fact and concluded that it would be better, in terms of clarity for appeal purposes, to add that specific language that an aggrieved party has, the specific appeal that is permissible under the Zoning Act, Chapter 48, Section 17. So, although it might be implied, it is a much better provision to make it that clear under existing case law.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, a follow-up for Town Council?
Go ahead.
So, if there's an additional avenue of appeal, why is that not in there, by certiorari? I just, I'm wary of this body, who are not attorneys, on advice of a board that's had some controversy relating to amending its bylaws.
So, you.
To change it to reflect a, a right that exists in law, or perhaps curtail a right that exists in law.
If you specifically indicate the appeal rights under 48, Section 17, relative to a zoning amendment, you don't need to pursue certiorari.
But if I understood you correctly, certain rights exist. There's an A and a B, and we're only talking about Route A in here.
Before we.
And I, it's not my area of the law, but conceivably, if there is any other avenue, we have created a conflict by saying, "in Southborough, you can only appeal it this way," whereas state law, which I haven't read and you have, may provide another avenue.
It is ver-
We should be careful to be reflective of what the general law says, not what this body may think it says.
No, I understand all of that.
Thank you.
The appeal under 48, Section 17, is the comprehensive appeal that is permissible to an aggrieved party that has standing. This is the best change to clarify the best appeal for anybody who is dissatisfied with the decision of the Planning Board.
But it is not the only route of appeal, correct?
It, it would, well, the answer to that is, if that language was not in there, there would be possibly two different ways to appeal. But it's imprecise. By putting in the statutory appeal for zoning, and this is zoning, that is the best approach. You don't need certiorari if you have the comprehensive appeal under Chapter 48.
I don't entirely understand, but I'm not sure why council would not have advised the board that was amending this to, if you felt it was necessary to put a phrase in there, to say something like, "all remedies provided by law." Because in addition to the statutory law, you could also have case law, which we've heard a little bit about, which may allow a different route. I'm not argue, I don't know the subject matter, I'm just saying I'm wary of putting into our bylaw something that could be arguably read as cutting off somebody's right that otherwise exists under, under the statute or under case law.
And respectfully, I am fully confident and comfortable with this language, because this is what you do in terms of an appeal for zoning under the Zoning Act. Certiorari can be used in different ways, but once you have cited that language as recommended, then you have a precise procedure of appeal with hundreds of cases defining the rights of the individuals on appeal.
I'm going to let it go. I heard best not only, so therefore I could not support it. But thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Cleary?
Jim Cleary, 51 Central Street, former member of the ZBA, number of years ago. I'd like to make a motion to table Article 32 to the next annual town meeting.
Mr. Cleary's made a motion to table the article. Um, first of all, does it receive a second?
Here's the reason why I, I want to table it. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of, against it. Zoning, zoning.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilson, you have a point of order?
We're talking about the amendment. So, you can't table the article until after we dispose of the amendment.
You are correct. You are correct. So, we're going to hold on that, Mr. Cleary, till we dispose of the amendment. Let me come over here to Mr. Perry.
Well, I, I want to speak to two things, in favor of the article, but I also am in favor of the amendment. Uh, I think it's been thoroughly looked at by Town Council. The ZBA Chair's a lawyer as well, so I propose that we move the amendment. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Perry, you're, you're, you're moving the question on the amendment?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Perry has asked to move the question. What that means is, it cuts off debate and brings the question to an immediate vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. Uh, it's not debatable. So, at this point, I'll ask for your, uh, votes, uh, with regard to moving the question, which just means we will cut off debate, and then we will have a second vote on the actual amendment. This is just to move the question. Requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority on the motion to move the question. We are, we are now, um, back to the original amendment, which you see up here. Uh, the amendment requires a majority vote. Um, and after we vote on this, Mr. Cleary, your, uh, your motion would be in order. So, uh, on the amendment, as proposed by Mr. Dennington, requires a majority vote. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. That, that motion carries, so now the amendment is on the table. Mr. Cleary?
Here's my reason. I, I understand the argument on both sides. But my concern is, I see my Advisory Committee, and I'm not sure of the Board of Selectmen, a hundred percent behind this. Zoning has to be right, because once you enact it, it affects everybody sitting in this room, and I think that's lost. I think a lot of the battles on zoning in recent years, in my own personal opinion, is because of one project in the town that has cut the town in turmoil. I think we need to think about this. I could say the Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen, the ZBA and Planning Board, come together with the right wording and come back with a, a pretty good recommendation as to what this town should do, instead of making fast, my considering, fast decisions. The other thought I had all along in this thing is I'm hung up on this. I really don't like turning it off to a judge in a remote town. I sat on the ZBA, I've had disagreements, we've had disagreements amongst ourselves, but we can battle those things out locally. They know the town, they know the people, they know the neighborhoods. When you send it off, and I've seen it, when I sat on the ZBA to a judge, he could care less. And if it's been a land court decision, then it's even worse. So, I think to, to, it's my point is to get this thing right, so that everybody out here understands it and knows what it means. Because every time you enact a change in zoning, forget the big projects, you're talking about our homes. Don't ever doubt that that's what's going to affect you. So, I suggest we move this on, get this thing right, and maybe what we have is right, but let's make sure before we enact zoning. Thank you.
All right. So, the motion is to, is to table the question. It's not a debatable motion, gentlemen. It requires a two-thirds vote. So, Mr. Cleary's motion is to table this, uh, which would have the effect of, uh, of, removing it from this town meeting. It requires a two-thirds vote. So, um, the clerk and Town Council have suggested, Mr. Cleary, that a motion, your motion to lay on the table does not preclude this from coming back in this meeting, if someone wants to then take it off the table. So, if your intention is to indefinitely postpone, that's the motion we have to have.
I'm sorry about that correction. Yes, that's, that's my intention, to indefinitely then postpone.
All right. Now, a motion to indefinitely postpone is debatable, and if that is what you're prepared to speak to, Mr. Perry, I will hear you.
Okay. Yes, I will. David Perry, 22 Main Street. I don't think we should postpone this. I think we should vote on it tonight. And, you know, the gentleman asked for clarity. Uh, this has been thoroughly looked at. It's not a new issue. It's been going on for four years, hasn't it? We've sort of got a mini war in town where one board's fighting another. It's totally ridiculous, and this is the answer to it. It's perfectly clear, and it is the answer, because we've, we've already heard from one of the members of Town and Count, Town Selectmen, that three out of a hundred and something towns, you know, have what we have. So, we are a rarity. This is odd. We shouldn't be doing this. We should be doing what other towns are doing, which is, you know, appeal it to court. That's the normal procedure. And so, I'd say to you, I've got three, three issues here. One, it avoids conflicts. We've got to stop these unnecessary conflicts. We've got a problem with the Planning Board, go to court. You, by the way, if you've got a problem with, with, uh, conservation, you don't go to the ZBA, do you? You have to appeal to some higher level, not in town, not, you're not vers, putting one board against another. That's one argument. Avoid these conflicts. Get rid of them. And then, the second point is, um, going, doing this, approving this, it clarifies the Town Council represents the, the, uh, the Planning Board. You know, if we, if we, if we don't change this, you've got one board against the other. So, you've got, we don't know who's representing one board or the other board, and that's the situation we're in now in court, where, you know, he represents one board, the board which is being appealed against, i.e. the Planning Board. That's the way it should be, is that clarifies Town Council's responsibility. And lastly, you know, the judge's opinion. I've got a copy here, the minutes of a Town, Town Selectmen's meeting on this, where Town Council, uh, proposed this change. Town Council proposed this change, it's important. And in the, in these minutes, I'm going to quote just three very short sentences, it's a whole long page, three sentences about what the judge said, and so I'm quoting from the minutes. "The land court judge presiding over the Park Central Appeal Case told Town Council that this process is unique and not commonly used. Two, the judge in court pointed out how highly unusual this bylaw is, and that if we strike it, it could be perceived as best practices in, by court and neighbors. And three, the use of this bylaw is a rarity." So, then we have three good reasons for moving this-
All right, thank you. Something new? Ms. Latrell?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
If a zoning article is indefinitely postponed, do you have to wait three years before you can bring it back?
Heldon?
That could, that could be construed to be a negative, and the only way to get back to the town meeting would be by a vote of the planning board. I suppose I should make one last comment, if it's okay, just with an indulgence. This whole thing, the inception was the former chief judge of the land court saying exactly what Mr. Perry said to me, and the revelation then, and my responsibility as your town council, is any time a court says to me something that questions or challenges our bylaws, then I have to at least bring it back to the town meeting for some, and the, and the board of selectmen, for some form of consideration. And I've heard a lot about what might happen and what could happen. This was the worst type of site plan review appeal by a developer, and a developer that would give no sufficient time or detail of plans to the planning board, and the planning board was compelled to do what they did. That's a very unusual case. In terms of the planning board's normal procedure on site plan review, which is very comprehensive in our bylaw, very detailed, for responsibility of any applicant and for the planning board, they always, in my experience, have acted reasonably in terms of tweaking or modifying a plan, so that it comes out approved with conditions. They rarely, if at all, have to deny, which then precipitates an appeal to either a court or to a, another agency, the zoning board of appeals. Respectfully, if you have the confidence in the planning board of this town, and I do, that they will make the right decisions and don't need to have a collateral administrative appeal by a fellow board, then you would support this amendment. Thank you.
All right, the motion to indefinitely postpone is a majority vote. If you pass that motion, obviously we'll move on. If you defeat the motion to indefinitely postpone, we'll be back to the article itself, the main motion, which will be a two-thirds vote. So, a, a yes vote ends this, and we move on to Article 35. A no vote brings us back to the amended motion. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing, please raise your cards. All opposed. All right, that motion fails. We are back to the amended motion. This is a two-thirds vote, because it is a zoning bylaw change. So, all those in favor of the amended main motion, please raise your cards. All opposed. I'm gonna have to count it. Tellers, please come forward. Folks, you could stay in your seats, because you have cards. When the count starts, we'll just have you raise your cards, you don't have to stand up. And there aren't that many of us tonight, so this can happen quickly. All right. Jim, could I, can I call it? Can I have, raise your cards? All right, go ahead. All right, all those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your cards, and tellers, please make sure you count the front of the room as well. All right, yeah, you could, you could lower your votes, and now, all those opposed, please All right, the clerk has the totals. Thank you. You could lower your cards. Appreciate your patience. We'll have the results in just a minute.
While we're reading, can I make a comment? Jeff Pete, 9 Atwood Road.
Name and address?
Jeff Pete, 9 Atwood Road.
Okay, what's your comment?
Didn't quite have time to stand up in between. No, no matter how many times I read the box over on the left, I don't see the word replacing in the bottom part, the point that was brought up earlier.
I didn't realize you wanted to comment on what we've already voted on. I'm gonna rule that out of order.
Okay.
My point of order is that I think we've gotten a little sloppy about people identifying themselves when they speak. I think it's really important that we know for the record and for our own general sense of it. Please, your name and your address.
I couldn't agree more with you. I, I can't help myself. You just didn't do that.
You, 'cause you called me by name.
Well, what's your address? No, point well taken, ma'am. Point well taken. Thank you. Okay, 112 total votes, 72 yes, 40 no. The yeses are 64.3 percent. The motion fails. Article 35, Mr. Peters.
Mr. Moderator, Article 35. I move that the town vote to amend our chapter 41, section 6 of the Code of the Town of South boro, Massachusetts by inserting the following text as subsection C. Do I have to read it?
Yeah, why don't you read this one? This is a simple one, but I think it'd be good to read and let people absorb it.
The moderator may select any two or more warrant articles to create one or more groups of so-called consent articles. For each such group of consent articles, the moderator shall ask the voters at the town meeting, article by article, if any town meeting members or member wishes to hold a particular article, and any such held article shall be removed from the group of, of consent articles. For the remaining consent articles in the group that have not had a request to be held, the moderator may ask for a single vote of the town meeting for the entire group of the remaining consent articles. And such single vote shall have the same effect as an individual vote to either approve or disapprove each of the non-held consent articles in the group.
Does that receive a second? Mr. Peters, quick explanation, please.
Yeah, I'll make it short, Mr. Moderator. This bylaw change provides the moderator with the option to group certain warrant articles at the town meeting for a single vote for the entire group of articles. The intent of this bylaw change is to allow the moderator to expedite the town meeting voting process for warrant articles that do not require presentation or discussion.
So, does everybody understand that? You know, if, if you, when we go through the budget, for example, we go through each line, and town meeting is allowed to hold or not hold line items in the budget. This is sort of an equivalent process for the entire warrant, where we go through the warrant articles at the beginning of the meeting. If none of them, if, if some are, are not held, meaning nobody cares to discuss them, we vote them as a group, which is designed to save us, you know, a little more time for things that are entirely administrative, non-controversial. But if it's not clear from the language here, I don't make that decision. We go through it, you tell me what you don't want to hold, and then we have that, we have that vote.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Moderator.
Discussion or questions? I see none. This is administrative bylaw, so it requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed. That motion carries. Okay, Article 23. Thank you for your patience on those. Ms. Gillespie, Article 23, Ms. Gillespie. Can you lower the mic? There you go.
Hello. Hi, can you hear me? Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. I'm the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And this is Article 23. I'm gonna give a brief comment afterwards, Paul.
Well, you gotta put the motion on the floor, and then I'll come back to you. Do you want to say something before we put the motion on the floor?
I was letting you know I'm gonna say it after, 'cause you asked me to.
Okay.
Article 23. I move that the town vote to accept the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2019, community preservation projected receipts, and act upon the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee, and to set aside for later expenditures, certain sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund, established pursuant to chapter 44B of the general laws, as printed in the warrant.
Does that receive a second?
Second.
So, yes, Ms. Gillespie's correct. I mean, that's, there's a lot of words in that motion. I asked her to talk briefly about the Community Preservation Act, and how the money is brought in, and how it goes out. So, please.
So, these set-asides are an annual requirement under the Community Preservation Act. It's legally required. First, we make our projected receipts, and then we have to put 10% into the various, what we call buckets. Is that available to show what was actually, or is only the motion available? Just the motion? So, if you look in your book, trying to find it here, you'll see that we have our open space historic preservation and community housing fund set-asides. So, first we, I'm sorry, I'm just finding it now. So, first we project how much we're going to receipt, receive, and then we have our set-asides. And then, that's our budget, and it goes into various buckets. And why these buckets are important, in later articles, you'll see that when we spend money out of the community preservation funds, we designate which account, we call them buckets, they come out of. But to clarify, Community Preservation Act was voted by the citizens. It was a surcharge on our tax that can only be spent for the purposes of affordable community housing, open space preservation, historic preservation, and recreation. So, we have an annual public forum. It will be coming up in May. Look out for it. We publicize it highly. If you have any questions, want to know how this all works, and if you have any suggestions for projects, please attend that, because CPA is complicated. One of the things we often hear when we propose a project is like, "Oh, I'd rather spend that money on kindergarten teacher," or "We need a new policeman." The reality is CPA money can't be spent on any regular town budgetary expenditures. It's only for the open space, affordable housing, historic, and recreation. Areas that the townspeople voted to add an additional tax to fund, because these types of projects were not normally funded under the regular budgeting procedure when they're up against, say, a kindergarten teacher or a new fireman needed. So, that's why I also urge you to come to our public forum, so you can get a better understanding of how this all works. So, that's Article 23, and an explanation of how this Community Preservation Act works briefly.
All right. All right, question or comment? Article 23 requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Article 24, Ms. Gillespie.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $109,072 from the Historic Preservation Reserve Fund to, sorry, to be applied towards the bond for the perpetual preservation restriction on 84 Main Street, also known as the Burnett House, for the purpose of historic preservation. The fiscal year 18 short-term interest debt payment is $19,347, and the fiscal year 19 debt payment, including principal, is $89,725, $89,725, for a total of $109,072. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Receive a second. Thank you, Ms. Gillespie.
This is the Community Preservation Fund payment towards the fiscal year 18 and 19 debt funding for the preservation restriction of 84 Main Street. We voted to purchase a preservation restriction on 84 Main Street, and this is an annual payment that will come forth every year to make that. And if you don't fund it out of CPA, the town will still have to pay it out of monies that would actually raise your taxes. That's the other thing. CPA money is already accounted for in your tax bill. There's no increase to your tax bill by any of these projects. It's just defining which projects we're going to spend money on every year.
All right, this requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Article 25. Ms. Gillespie.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $26,450 from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve Fund, with $23,000 for the restoration of the old burial ground, as requested by the Southborough Historical Commission, and an additional $3,450 contingency. Contingency funds only available after approval of the CPC for unexpected cost unforeseen at time of application. Project proposed by the Historical Commission, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Thank you. Does that receive a second? Second? Go ahead, Ms. Gillespie.
Kate Madison was going to give the presentation tonight for the Historical Commission. She's sick, so her husband's going to do a brief run-through. But I first have to mention that the CPC recommends this project with the understanding that money will not be released until final documentation has been received. We approve this with contingent on receiving some further documentation, which we haven't gotten yet, but we do not want to push out the project in other years to prevent further degradation to the monuments. So, we came up with this. We just wanted to let town meeting know that.
All right, thank you, sir. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Peter Quirk, 8 Davis Road. I'm the husband of the Vice Chair of the Historic Commission. So today, the Commission is requesting a total of $26,450 for repairs to the old burial ground. This is a core asset in the historical center of the town. It was created in 1730, just a few years after the town was incorporated. It was active until about 1895, according to the last burial record, although the rural cemetery was created in 1850 to replace it. For those who don't know where it is, and I know of at least one person who didn't know where it is, it's in the triangle just north of Common Street, between St. Mark Street and Common Street. There are 18 rows of gravestones. We're looking to repair 89 of those which are in bad condition. When the, when the burial ground was surveyed back in 2000, the condition of the burial ground was deemed to be fair. In the 17 years, or 18 years since then, it has degraded somewhat. The Historical Commission requested a survey of the gravestones by, the gravestones of New England, Gravestone Services of New England. They came up with a recommendation for 89 stones that should be repaired. You can see that many of the town's historic names are present on these stones, the Newtons and the Fays, and many other famous families in town represented in this burial ground. The work that needs to be done, in most cases, is straightening up the stones, creating a new level bed for them to lie on, replacing sod, et cetera. So, we've identified 89 of the stones that are in danger of falling over soon. You can see in this particular one, a diagonal slashed through the stone, where it has been repaired because it had collapsed in the past, and it's time to straighten these up again and preserve our heritage. So, that's the, that's the summary. I'd like to commend this action to you, and look forward to your vote.
Thank you, sir. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Article 26, Ms. Gillespie.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $32,530 from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve Fund for the Southborough Library facade restoration project, as requested by the Southborough Library Trustees. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer. So, in summary, this article will provide for a building and site-related assessment to preserve the Southborough Public Library, an historic structure that was one of the oldest and most-used municipal buildings in Southborough. The study will result in the conditions assessments and prioritized list of treatment recommendations to guide that effort. All of the recommended work will comply with the Building and Architectural Access Board Codes as applicable, the Historic District Review requirements, and the Secretary of the Interior standard for the treatment of historic properties. And this project will be overseen by the Southborough Library Trustees. And I see I have one up here in the library director to answer any questions. Do you want to say anything?
We'd like to thank the Community Preservation Committee for working with us in the past year in the development of this grant and this project. This is very important. I think a lot of people, when they look at the library from far away, they're like, "It's a beautiful building." And then, when you get up close, you start to see that there are pieces of it crumbling. Just this past week, we have to have a cone on our front stairs, because it, like, the stonework is completely eroding away on the historic stairwell. So, this project is really important. We really would like your support tonight, if that's all right.
All right. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Article 27, Ms. Gillespie.
Sorry.
So, this may be one I would suggest dispensing with the actual reading, and just describing with leave of the hall. I'll let you have as much as you need to describe what it is, but the actual words on the page, I think, are peripheral. Do I have leave of the hall to dispense with the actual reading of the motion? Please raise your hands. Thank you very much. Ms. Gillespie, can you explain? The title is Acquisition of Zero Rock Point Road.
Okay, so, I'm gonna kind of take it in a piece. First of all, there's $50,000 to cover legal and acquisition costs, surveys and things like that that might be required. And then, there's $125,000 to cover the land purchase, for a beautiful piece of property located off Rock Point Road, describes the actual location. It also requires, under Community Preservation Act, purchase of land for open space, you must put a conservation restriction on the property. So, that is included here. And we've also included language that will allow us to apply for grants to maybe recoup some of the cost on the project. So, there are state grants that give you up to 50% back. No guarantee that we will qualify to apply, and no guarantee that if we apply that we will get them, but this allows us to do that. And under the Community Preservation Act application process, we always ask that all projects try to leverage our CPA funds by applying for any and all other afford, grants and funding sources they can get. So, we have a presentation that's going to talk a little bit about the property, but the, all this wordiness is pretty much legal requirements to do this project, and it is bonding, so there will be a two-thirds vote. I'm gonna turn it over to, I think, my Vice Chair.
Yes, the answer is yes, on a quantum. It will be two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Well, I'm gonna turn this over to Benjamin Smith, who is a CPC member doing, he's also a member of the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission did a lot of work on preparing this, and the land, that was the big thing, I didn't say, will be under the care and control of the Conservation Commission, and they'll be working with whoever's the CR holder, so.
All right, Mr. Smith, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Ben Smith, 86 Middle Road. As Freddie said, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission and Community Preservation Commission. Let's see here. What do I do?
There you go.
Sorry. Jumped the gun. There we go. Okay, so, the property is currently owned by the Halloran Children's Trust. It's located just north of the Mass Pike, between Rock Point Road and Hupley Lane, and just south of Boswell Lane. It actually abuts a parcel of land that's already owned by the town, an open space parcel. It's about seven and a five, seven and a half acres. So, this new property will help protect and extend an existing natural wildlife and greenway corridor that runs just to the north of the Mass Pike, along through that area. Here's a picture. You can see that the parcel that's already owned by the town is shaded in purple. You can see the parcel itself is about two-thirds upland and perhaps a third wetland. The wetland's shown in a blue pattern. Okay, so, the, the parcel is, it's characterized by some mostly rolling upland terrain, streams, wetland areas, and three potential vernal pools. There are several stands of old-growth heritage trees, as well as an existing network of cart paths that are still in remarkably good shape. You can see some members of the Conservation Commission walking on the cart paths. The paths include, in fact, bridged ditches that allow you to circulate through the entire parcel. The property is originally part of the Killam Farm, that was located on Richards Road. This parcel was orphaned from the farm by the construction of the Turnpike. After the construction of Boswell Lane, the parcel was left without any street frontage, but, but has access from a right-of-way that extends off of Rock Point Road. The Halloran family purchased the parcel in 2000 for $187,500, with the intention of preserving, preserving the parcel as open space. After they sold their home in 2016, the Hallorans contacted the town to discuss ways that they might preserve the parcel as open space. They sat down with, with Ms. Gillespie, myself, and Beth Rosenbloom, our conservation agent, and we went forward, had the parcel appraised. The appraisal came in at $125,000 for, I should stress this, roughly 31 acres of land. The reason for the number on that appraisal is because it doesn't currently have any frontage on a public way. So, the Community Preservation Committee supports the purchase of the property with CPA funds. These funds, as Freddie said earlier, these funds already exist, and the purchase will not cause any increase in property tax for Southborough residents. The funding requested here, in addition to the $125,000, includes funds to cover legal survey and engineering costs, as well as the costs to create a conservation restriction. And again, as Freddie said, the property will be placed under the care and control of the Conservation Commission, which will add yet further protection to it as, as open space. There's town-wide support for this purchase. The property's been ranked as a top priority on Southborough's Open Space and Recreation Plan. It's ranked extremely high on Mass Autobahn's Habitat Survey. SOLF has confirmed that the property is a priority for protection. The Board of Selectmen have voted unanimously to support the purchase. The Assessors' Office, as well as Conservation and Open Space Commissions, have confirmed the value of the property and endorsed the purchase of it. And the Trails Committee, after the purchase, will assist with signage and mapping to help improve access. So, I encourage Southborough to accept this, what is really a remarkably generous gift from the Halloran family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This is a, Ms. Rosenbloom, are you going to the mic, or are you going to your seat? All right. This is a, obviously, an acquisition of an interest in real estate, which by statute requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor of Article 27? Please raise your cards. All opposed? That motion carries. Article 28, Ms. Gillespie.
Sorry, before I go on to 28, I also would just like to thank the Halloran family for making this wonderful opportunity available to us. Anyone who knows the price of land in Southborough, 16 acres just went for two and a half to $3 million. 30 acres for this price is just really, you know, yeah, we're paying for it, but it really was very generous on the behalf of the family.
Yeah, you make a good point. Kathy Halloran is out here somewhere. Where is she?
Can you stand up?
Way in the back on the right.
Thank you, and I've done something, and this is like going away from me.
You can take it out, just hold it.
I don't like holding them.
Okay. Article 28.
It's always got to be something. What number are we on?
28.
28. Okay, here we go. To see if the town will appropriate $50,000 with $38,079 from the CPA Open Space Reserve Fund, and $11,921 from the CPA Fiscal Year 19 budgeted reserve, to fund the golf course conservation restriction endowment and associated costs for the recording of the conservation restriction, as requested by the Board of Selectmen. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer, or take any other action thereto. That wasn't the motion, sorry.
All right, yeah, you read the article, but the motion is in, is in this form. You can move what's up on the screen, Ms. Gillespie.
Can I move what's up on the screen?
Yes. Does it receive a second? I heard a second. Ms. Gillespie.
So... I'm sorry.
What number are we on?
28.
28. Project proponents are the Board of Selectmen. This article will allow the town to per, that's the wrong one, right?
Hold on.
I think my motion's...
Yeah, this is at the bottom, about two-thirds of the way down, page 42 of the warrant booklet. It starts with, "Project proposed by the Board of Selectmen, this article." Go ahead.
This article uses the best estimates available to provide funds to cover the endowment and other associated costs to finalize the conservation restriction on the Southborough Golf Club, as required by March 8, 2017, town meeting vote to purchase the land.
All right.
If there's no que...
Mr. Shea, do you need to speak to that?
Yeah, so just...
Yeah, so just some additional information on this. So, March 2017, the special town meeting authorized the purchase of the golf course property with the conservation restriction. Our board has been working with other boards on the development of the conservation restriction document itself. We voted at a meeting last night, prior to the start of town meeting, our final approval of the conservation restriction in its current form, and have authorized counsel to send that to the state. This dollar amount, which we're covering through CPA, is to cover the endowment fee for the holder of the conservation restriction. So, again, the conservation restriction was required by the March 2017 vote. This is the endowment fee required for it. Given the value of the property, this endowment fee is a very, very reasonable amount, and we urge the hall to support this.
All right, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, that motion carries. Article 29.
Before we go to 29, I just wanted to state on that one, this was a wonderful collaborative effort, and I think we should all applaud the Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, the Golf Course CR Committee, the Golf Course Committee, and numerous other boards and individuals and the neighbors, and who spent countless hours. That announcement, Selectman Shea just announced, was sort of slipped in there, but they signed off on a CR that took many, many months, many people working really hard, and I think we should give everyone a round of applause. Thank you.
Well stated. Article 29, Ms. Gillespie.
I moved at the town vote to appropriate $581,716,000 with $571,145 from the CPA General Unreserve Fund and $10,571,000 from the CPA Fiscal Year '19 Budgeted Reserve for recreation purposes for the restoration of the golf course and construction of a parking area with retaining wall as requested by the Golf Course Committee. $509,275,000 in project cost with an additional $72,441,000 in contingency funding. Contingency funds only available after approval of the CPC for unexpected costs unforeseen at the time of application, for a total of $581,761. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer. So, earlier in town meeting...
Hold on. Does it receive a second?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Such a failure tonight. This article will allow the town to restore the golf course to a visually appealing, playable condition and preserve the recreational opportunity provided by the course. It also preserves historic open space vistas, natural habitat, and passive recreation opportunities. In addition, this article will allow the town to construct a parking area and retaining wall. This project is needed because construction of the new public safety building will effectively end golf course operations unless funds are allocated to restore the course to the appropriate playing state for future potential. Continued golf course operation is required under Article -- were in Article 1 of the March 8, 2017 Special Town Meeting, which passed with more than 90% of town meeting attendees voting in favor. An owner's project manager under the supervision of the Golf Course Committee will be chosen to oversee the project. So, I wanted to say a little more than just that summary. Last night, you heard that the bids for the public safety building came in less than expected, and therefore, there was a reduced cost for the relocation of the clubhouse. There's also going to be a reduced cost for this article, but the CPC got notification of that at such a late date for our vote that we didn't want to try guesstimating what it might be, because this article actually has two components. It has the parking lot and retaining wall, which are under the bid that came in for the public safety building, and it also has the reconstruction of the holes that are going to be changed because of the public safety building being on part of the golf course. And that will be a separate budget item. So, we're not really sure. We think it's about $30,000 less. Until the bids are actually awarded, we won't know exactly. And under CPA funding, this money doesn't get given to anyone. It's in our accounts, and we only pay for work that's done. So, there's no risk or problem with not reducing it now, because we're not going to spend more than the project's worth, and once the project's done, the monies will go back into the accounts they came out of that aren't spent.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Seconded.
I'm sorry.
So, my question is, was intention -- it's a little hard to read this exactly, but is it a transposition error, or is there intended a $50 difference between the appropriation and the total? You see, you've got 581716 and 581761 at the bottom. I mean, was that supposed to be there?
No, that's not supposed to be there.
So, it's been moved, you know?
But the 509275 and the 72441 actually equal 581761. It just doesn't agree, the top and the bottom.
Yeah, well, that needs to be fixed. So, would you like to entertain a motion to amend this, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, no, we clearly need to do that. I'm going to ask Mr. Shea, do we have the actual numbers? I mean, we...
Mr. Butler's correct. We're not talking about significant deltas, but we should get it correct.
I don't have my calculator, but if you add the two numbers together, whatever that equals is what it's supposed to be. 571145 and 10571. I'm hoping that adds up to one of the... Because I'm not going to tell you who wrote this.
This should be 716. Correct. Okay, so we need a motion to amend to that effect, please.
So, I move to amend the sentence ending for a total of 581761 to read instead 581716.
Does that receive a second? All right, Mr. Butler, could, if you would allow, just sign up with Ms. Hale to put that in writing. The motion to amend is a majority vote, all in favor. All opposed. Thank you, Mr. Butler. That motion carries. Now, the amended article with the corrected dollar figure is what you have on the floor. That's also a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed. Motion carries. Mended motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Article 30, Ms. Gillespie.
I moved that the town vote to appropriate $15,000 from the CPA Fiscal Year '19 Budgeted Reserve for the implementation of the Audubon International Classic Program at the golf course as proposed by the Golf Course Committee and the Open Space Preservation Commission. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Does that receive a second?
Second.
Ms. Gillespie.
So, the USGA-sponsored Audubon International Classic Program is a prestigious designation that will assist in promotion of the course as a destination for golfers while providing beneficial guidance of the golf, to the golf management company and the holders of the conservation restriction on best environmental management practices in renovations and running the golf course. The Classic Program will assist in development of the management plan required in the CR, reducing costs to the town in developing the plan. I just wanted to add that last night, you heard someone worried that the golf course was a monoculture and an environmental disaster for land management. Not the golf course, but any golf course. And this here, Audubon International, is started with the golf industry's response to negative impressions on how golf courses were managed, and it is a very prestigious organization that looks after not just golf, but environmental concerns to a high standard that will make this golf course not only very playable, it's, you know, it's in the interest of golfing foremost and environmental protection just as much. I don't know why I said foremost. It's like really making an amazing golf course. And how I came across it was, the Open Space Preservation Commission has started a new initiative for native plants, native pollinators, and while doing research on that, I came across a monarch in the ruff program, which is managing the ruffs of golf courses to promote monarch habitat, and that program was sponsored by Audubon International. So, this is a win-win-win. It's going to create an organization the town can use to help bridge the gap between the CR holders, who are really conservation environmentally minded, and the golf course management, who are golf-oriented, and they might not always agree on things, and you're going to have someone in the middle who knows both. And Audubon International has a great track record. Their courses that are certified or in the program have reached some of the highest standards. I just want to take a minute. Like, in Massachusetts, there's some, they're in, you know, Nantucket, and some of the most prestigious golf courses we have. Fifty-two members of the golf course under Audubon International were ranked among America's 100 greatest golf courses by Golf Digest, and that list's top 10 included six Audubon International golf participants. This is not insignificant, and this designation will be a great asset for promoting the golf course, for PR. And, once certified, we join the prestigious ranks of other Audubon International courses. And I like to think of it as, you know, the Southborough Golf Club, an Audubon International classic course. That sounds pretty good to me. And the management company has agreed to this, and the golfers are in favor. This, you know, this is a really win-win, and it will really help us have an outstanding, environmentally-run, historic heritage landscape as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Donna McDaniel.
Name an address, please, ma'am.
I forget a lot of things lately. I do remember where I live.
I've forgotten a ton up here the last two nights. Please, go ahead.
54 William on Thank Lane in Southborough. I just want to say, as we vote on this, how grateful I feel. Isn't it nice to come in after you can do some things where the money's already spent, and all you have to do is say, "Oh, I'll be glad to do that." The community preservation, the whole concept of it is incredible in many ways. Look at what we've just done. And the person, I think, if one person deserves just about all the credit for at least keeping us alive so we would do this, it's the person who's been presenting this tonight.
Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Joe Palmer, 158 Parkerville. My interest is only in whether the $15,000 is a one-time fee, whether it's an annual membership fee, whether it's implemented on the course or given to the organization, and whether that will be, if it's continuing, will be funded by the golf course or by the town as a residual fee every year. Thanks.
Yeah, I can address that and probably should have, because I get so wrapped up in what a wonderful program it is. The $15,000 is a budget we put together. It costs $4,000 to apply. You need a site assessment. There's fees going forward to get during the certification process for preparation of the plan. You have to do, it's a pretty intense environmental survey, and to create that, we did not want to put a burden upon the golf course management company that has already done, taken a big risk by agreeing to run a golf course during construction of a major police and fire station on land where their golf clubhouse is, and that has to be moved, and the holes have to be reconstructed. We really wanted this program to help move this golf course into a really prestigious, beautiful place, but not at any burden to them. So, this money will be to help create the plan. There's things such as they have to have quarterly water testing in the stream. That's significant, and it has a cost. So, we did a budget that would cover about three years of the expense of getting through the certification process, which I'll also state, it's not difficult, I shouldn't say it's not difficult. There are standards. A lot of them, this course will probably already be doing, and they do outreach and education to their employees, so they'll learn how to manage a golf course differently. So, the money is mostly to get them through certification, what we expect would take three years, through the redesign phase, up to three years, and then, once they're beyond getting all the documents and stuff in place, it's a $500 a year annual membership fee that we think this Southborough Golf Club, an Audubon International classic course, is really going to be able to afford that $500. So, the answer is, the $15,000 will, should take care of the upfront cost, and then the annual fee the golf course management company should be able to handle.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. Folks, I said last night that town meeting doesn't take place up here, it takes place out there, and you all did a wonderful job. Do I have a motion to dissolve the 20...
Excuse me. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I don't know the form of this. With the indulgence of this body, I'd like to move to reconsider the vote on Article 32 presented by Ms. Brascio for the Board of Selectmen, the original motion.
And what's the basis for that, ma'am?
Betsy Rosenbloom, 5 Strawberry Hill Row. Ms. Brascio gave an excellent presentation. At least in my mind, it was eclipsed by the debate on the amended motion. I had an issue with the form of the amendment. Someone else came to this mic and spoke to the form of the amendment, and I'm not sure whether or not that would have influenced people in their vote. I spoke with Mr. Morris. The planning board does not, the planning board doesn't want these grievances going to the ZBA. I spoke with Mr. Dennington. Mr. Dennington's board does not want these grievances. Both of these gentlemen support the motion to reconsider, and I think people ought to have a chance to vote on the merits, aside from whatever issues people like myself had with the form of the amendment.
All right, so, I'm going to ask the clerk just to confirm my memory, but we disposed of Article 32 with a vote on the amended article, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, we're not going back to the original motion, ma'am, I'm sorry to say, and I'm going to rule that the motion to reconsider is not in order.
I'm sorry, could you just explain again? I didn't understand the explanation.
So, we voted to, there was a motion to amend Article 32. It passed. We then took up that amended motion, and that failed. But there is no going back to, we took up, we passed the amendment, so that's it. That's the main article. Then that motion, as amended, failed. So, there's no going back to the original motion by Ms. Brascio. I'm sorry.
Oh, so there's no way to just revisit that issue apart from the substantive issues that may have been presented by the amendment? There's just no way?
Not at this town meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's a fair question, and I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to dissolve the 2018 annual town meeting? Does it have a second? We are dissolved. Thank you very much.